Yeah.
Third snow after.
You have three snows.
Pretty true.
You always have three snows after the.
Except the blue.
Little yellow things, bro.
If you were to tell Grandma Ma or Grandma Heather that was wrong.
Seven o'clock, we're on call to meeting to order. Uh, roll call.
Nancy.
Here.
Jay.
Here.
Andrea.
Here.
Ross.
Yeah.
Eric.
Yeah.
Okay, upcoming legislation. First, we have the Van Trust building uh to the CRA partial assignment.
Yeah, I've got a tax specialist looking at it um because they did not send along the local and state analysis. So far, it appears they're in compliance with the local um. It appears they do not have to get approval from the school district um because there's no impact. So uh pending state review by a tax attorney um will approve the partial assignment and have the legislation to Alan in time for the April first meeting um. Just so everyone knows, uh this is just an an assignment from one entity to the successor entity. There's no change.
Oh.
Yes, no difference um. But because it is, it touches on some very complicated tax laws on who needs approval. I had to pass uh pass it through a tax attorney in our firm.
I've got a question on that. The um and I know that uh Van Trust is gonna come up with this and they're gonna want the uh readings waived and everything because they've got a pending sale on the building and everything. So they're pretty in a hurry for it. As we do these in the past, we've just basically, like you said, we've everything's fell into place. It's been good. We just keep redoing them or okaying them. Does there come, I mean, and I know basically then we treat the new person as if they were the original.
Step in their shoes, right?
Is there come a time where we want to stop that to the point that we don't have to keep doing CRAs? I mean, okay, so Van, Bill Scala got the CRA. He gave it to, or he did the partial assignment over to Van Trust. Van Trust is this one complicated, bounced around a few times or whatever. But now we're at the point where we have the CRA is going to a person or an outside party buying the building. They're gonna become the new property owner. If we keep giving the original agreement, does this mean that if he sells it and in that original agreement, it says that we will okay the CRA, there comes a point in time, does counsel ever have a position where they can say we don't want to okay the CRA?
You can always vote to amend legislation. Uh but the CRA is a a vested interest in the then property owner. So if you're approving this, it goes to the then property owner.
Okay, I I and I guess my only concern was, okay, they sell it to these folks and everything's good.
Sure.
But and this is kind of like, I guess, the first different property owner other than Van Trust. No problem passing that CRA on, but say they're here for a couple of years, they decide they want to sell and they sell it to somebody who doesn't bring a lot of employees or this or that, but we have an agreement that says.
Has to come back to you for vote.
But does, does anything in that agreement say that we have to, we shall approve that agreement as we move forward?
I would have to read what.
Because I was thinking there was something in there that kind of said we'd go along with that.
And what the current assignment says, I need to read. And then if you want the ability to vote on any subsequent transfer, we could certainly put that into the legislation. Because the CRA is gonna have a couple of attachments to it, as you saw. I sent an email to counsel. My tax guy needs all your attachments. And I want to know what you're thinking about from a point of legislation. Um, he said he'd get back to me.
The um, of course, I mean, and this, of course, for the original agreement uh that we have for abatement, that's fifteen years is out. Is that timeframe attached to anything with this?
Yeah, the timeframe still runs from there.
So fifteen years of dies?
So it would be naturally self-expiring.
It will expire fifteen.
But the the timeframe. Let me think about this. The timeframe's. Does it start once the improvement on the land?
I'd have to read it.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, it does. Typically, it's a not till shovel turn. Yes, yes, it does.
And there's so many like thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars worth of improvement or something like that.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if that was the CRA or the TIF where I saw that, so.
But I mean, they're all economic development tools that politics use.
I just want to make sure that if there's something in there, and I I figured that there was something in there from the original agreement, because when the developer came in and he got the, when K Nova got the CRA or got the property approved for a tax abatement, that he'd want to keep continuing uh guarantee so he could sell it, that we wouldn't object to it. But I want to see, does that stop sometime down the road as this thing keeps getting sold?
It only stops when it runs out of time or you vote to amend the legislation.
Okay.
Would we have to vote to amend before it was sold to somebody new? Or is that at any time?
Well, we're going to approve of the transfer of the CRA as it currently exists without amendment.
Okay.
So if we want to amend it, we need to know before.
Oh, that would be before, okay.
But typically, the original owner is gonna get the CRA and pass it on to the developer who's going to utilize that to make an economic investment that makes economic sense to them.
Yeah.
At what point do you think it would be beneficial to amend one?
Well, I I like I said, I don't have no problem with this. This is Van Trust sending it to a buyer, so I have no problem with that whatsoever. But it's just like if this buyer got to the point, hey, three few years down the road, I'm out, I'm gonna sell the building, you're gonna send it over.
How long can, do we have to keep doing it?
Do we, and I understand it's all, the clock's already ticking and it would run out, but I don't want to lock the, I don't want to see the village get locked into something where, hey, maybe the new buyer won't be as beneficial as the current person there or something like that.
So it would almost be, we would have one transfer, but not.
It it all ties into that initial development of all your tax fees, all your infrastructure. That's typically how a CRA works in an economic standpoint, snapshot in any given year. But you have to have that to get the development. And it's typical that a CRA will change hands one, two, three times, just because it's for so long. It's the same with the TIF area. You lock a TIF down for twenty years and all of that tax that goes to the improvements set off the cost to whoever owns the property, right?
Okay.
Anything else?
Interesting.
Okay, El Can and Retail Center. Rezoning.
Just rezoning, same with the Addison Farms. Um, nothing special.
Discussion on this?
I I sent a, I sent a copy of this to everyone just so you could see. They've been, we've had a couple of meetings with them. Um, what they're looking to do is rezone this from neighborhood commercial to general commercial.
And is that required for this type of a?
Yes, because what, what they have, the the neighborhood commercial is you're only allowed to have a, I believe, two thousand square foot building. And they're wanting to put up a ten thousand square foot building is what that is. And then with the general commercial came up with, there's some different setbacks and everything else. And when they, when they originally started this, they was talking a smaller building. They came in, they asked about it. And I told them at that time, I said, well, you, you know, you got your two choices. Either come in and start asking for variances if you want something larger. Well, then when they figured out that they was going, wanting like a ten thousand, I said, I don't think counsel's gonna okay five times the size of that.
That's a variance.
Yeah, you know, so we kind of, we, and I told him, I said, I think the best thing to do is just go for general commercial. Well, Pettits on the um, the other side of them here is already general commercial. Uh, they are still neighborhood commercial and they butt up against Chestnut Estates is what they will do. They had to, where the building was sitting before, they had to scoot the building over because they're required to have a fifty-foot setback from a residential district. And any structures, and I told them that we have, we consider parking lot, driveways and everything as a structure. So he had to actually scoot the driveway and everything fifty feet over off the property line. And you'll see that is what they've done with that. They're looking at um basically some mound. In fact, what's it say on the thing? A four-foot mound and uh with two-foot high bushes all the way around and so on and so forth on a couple of sides. Um, we've met with them a few times. This is the, like I said, it's the gentleman that came in here who's looking to open the restaurant. The restaurant would be in the front square on that property, the diagonal square there. And um basically, it's this guy that owns the same property, the Mexican restaurant up there on six sixty-five beside uh Flyers.
And this is an addition. He's not closing that one, correct?
My understanding, he, this would be uh in addition to that one. And he's looking at, I guess this would be his, I believe, his fifth restaurant. He's got four other ones already under operation. He's looking to build a fifth one. So that's, I just wanted everyone to be aware, they are coming in at the next council meeting to do a presentation. So if you have any questions or anything, I told him I thought that would be best before he submitted his rezoning or anything. But basically, he does have to get this rezoned to a general commercial to build a building of that size.
And it's three tenants. He's in the front, that a tenant?
Not necess, no, no, it's, he's here and I'm not sure, we're not sure what's going on with the rest of it.
Well, because I mean, if if it was the multiple tenants, the general commercial's concerned because of what our general commercial allows. You know, down the road, but I mean, if he's gonna do it all, then that's kind of moot.
No, he he would be in the front part and then they would be having other businesses throughout the building on the back end.
My only concern, the general commercial is what could go there.
Odds, it's what, it's what's listed in the um zoning code.
Right, I mean, I don't think.
I don't have the list in front of me.
I don't think we need a agriculture repair on sales place that, you know, right there. I don't know that that'd be good, but that's allowed by general commercial. Yep. You know, there's a few other things, some odd repair stuff that could be in general commercial. My concern is not with what he's doing right now, but in the future, is that what we want, a chance of going there?
What he mostly has, I mean, that's the one, I wouldn't think he'd put something like that next to his restaurant. I mean, that's just me. I mean, I was you know, I wanna smell grease and oil when I'm eating my Mexican, you know?
But if he goes out and somebody else comes in, then, you know, what would they do? That, that's my concern, not him, but it, you know, five, ten years down the road, that zoning follows it.
Probably something he, now I haven't looked at like his other clauses that he has.
Well, there, it's like an orange theory. I mean, he's in, I think all those other ones are, he's in other owned strip malls.
Yeah.
So with this one, with him having control.
Yeah, it's just one restaurant, there's one part of the building.
Yeah.
Yeah, just like, but I didn't know, like, has he owns five locations, you said? So I wasn't sure what he had, like, in the other, nobody has there.
I found four and they're all strip malls. I don't know about the other one, so.
So there are any questions, which one in this building?
Yeah, what, what's the?
And I think at this time, he probably doesn't know yet either.
But is that something?
Tattoo shop.
Well, if you zone it general commercial, he doesn't have to come back and ask anything because it's, it's in your zoning code that counsel passed.
Right, you can't spot it.
You know.
It's either.
It's either you let it or you don't. And if you say, no, we're not going to, well, then basically this, yeah, this goes away.
It couldn't be a planned thing?
He could go with a planned district if he wanted to do a planned commercial district. That was his other option. And when I, because I spelled that out to him also, I said, you could go planned industrial or a planned commercial district or general commercial to get that building in here. If you do a planned commercial, he has to come and negotiate everything with counsel. If you do the general commercial, he has to follow the zoning code to the letter of the law.
Was that something we can, I I haven't read the zoning code for that. Is that something?
You might want to take a look before the next, yeah. There's nothing, nothing out there yet. You may want to look at what your code allows before the next meeting.
Yeah.
Do we have, we have copies of this on the platform? I mean, something that shows dimensions to lot lines and and configured on the property?
He hasn't plotted it. I've gotten it approved yet.
Okay.
And he's a rezoned before he goes to that expense.
Okay, no, I just, I'm just curious about locating this on the property, what's it look like and and uh we know we're not gonna have two entrances out front and
what shows do?
Yeah, there are, this, this is the entire property.
We, we would make one of these.
This is, this is the property right beside, like the pond, the Pettits is right over here.
It's right here.
On the bottom side.
It's down here at the bottom, so they would, they would want two entrances?
Yes, and that's what they have here is two entrances coming in off of Welltrou.
We'd have to make one of those right in, right out. We're gonna have five, we're in a very short thing, possible left turns. And I mean, that's getting busy at certain times of night.
And we've got this island that's over into the existing right away. Uh, when that, when that road is improved, where do we have room to? You may require a traffic study as part of it. To approve it.
To see if you're going to need a center lane out.
Oh.
Well, the problem is you can't put another lane in there because the lanes have to be, they're supposed to be a hundred and fifty feet apart. And that was something that came up with this. He had to be, his entries, his entry here had to be a hundred and fifty feet away from the chestnut.
Right.
And the one here had to be a hundred and fifty feet away from Pettits, which they, both of them are. But if you notice his center line on these, it came back a hundred and forty-four, six inches. But that lined it up with the driveway, which seemed, okay, it made a little more sense than saying, no, it has to be a hundred and fifty, and now his entrance doesn't fit the drive coming through the parking lot.
Is there any access from here to Pettits parking lot?
No, no, this is strictly, this is his property and he's, and he's showing there what they have, even on the Pettit side, once he got there, fourteen trees or whatever.
Yep, yeah.
And they couldn't connect for a reason.
They was originally looked at, he wanted to bring this road on over here to Pettits driveway. And because of the pond.
Yeah.
The pond sitting there because of a fire hydrant they stumbled into and Pettit's sign. Those were the three things that just ruined, because I would have, that was original thing that they talked about was they'd have one entrance in and then it also, you could come over and Pettits driveway, which would have been great, but it didn't work.
Connect the road?
Yeah. But all that kind of fell apart because of the uh, like I said, way everything lined up and with what's already in place at Pettits. And he'd had to worked out an agreement with Pettits then to move their sign and the pond and the fire hydrant and you just ended all that kind of stuff. And that's, and that's, like I said, he, he kind of like they, this is the avenue they chose to go was just asking to rezone the general commercial because it fit. It was a lot easier, you know, the village offers general commercial.
Yes.
So he said, well, why don't I just go that? I said, well, you have to follow.
Yeah.
You know?
Yep.
Everything doesn't have to be a planned district. And also with a planned district, you're required to do a traffic study with general commercial. You're not.
See, I think that's, I mean, traffic study will make sense.
I, I, I.
Yeah, although it's not required, doesn't mean you can't ask him to do it.
Oh.
Um, just means it's not required for approval.
So we could ask for one prior to putting it to vote, you could say.
Don't they take a while, a while?
Six months.
Six months?
Oh, we only got two more, or we only got.
I don't, I don't know if that's six months, I, if that's, I think.
It might be a limited traffic.
So are we on like a schedule for this now, right? Now that he's put it in, we have to act with him, so traffic's going on, no?
No, he has not filed for the rezoning yet.
Oh, okay.
He's gonna come up to us next month and talk about it before he submits anything.
Okay.
So if we have questions, we'll have to look at the general commercial.
Okay.
Go to see, maybe we can.
Yep, we'll be able to ask questions.
Yeah.
Okay. So you'll, I mean, we'll know when it puts, comes in, that's when our time starts, for like the ninety days, whatever.
The, no, your time will start once he submits a rezoning application. What he's going to do is come in at the next regular council meeting and we'll have him listed as a business item. And you can just back and forth with him, discuss. Uh, he said he'd try to get some pictures together, what it would, should look like and everything else and just to kind of give everyone an idea of what he's looking at, wanting to bring in.
Okay.
So I just want to give everyone, this is kind of like a heads up, we just got this there, so.
Okay, is there any uh, any more questions on that? Move down to additional business. Do you have any additional business?
Any questions on Addison's first name?
Yeah.
Yeah, I see.
We didn't go through Addison.
Oh, I checked them off ahead of time. My bad, Sam, where are you going?
They took up an hour. On, on this, uh, on this Addison thing, um are we gonna have, um, are we gonna have homes on slabs and crawl spaces on basements? What are we gonna have?
I think the patio is on.
The patio is on slabs was my understanding, but I don't know for sure.
Are, okay, um, and okay.
I said, he, he was in here when the pre-annexation and he did the presentation to all of the council back then, although it's, council's changed, but.
I, I think most patio homes, aren't they on slabs? Is what I, what I heard, that most.
Yeah, patio is our slabs, generally speaking, yeah.
Because they're usually for fifty-five and over and they want the least amount of maintenance.
Hey, hey, hey.
I didn't say we were moving you.
Telling you what, and see, now we, now we're right on edge of.
Close.
That close, a few minutes. Uh, as far as the offsite goes, uh uh, you know, I, I'm looking on this traffic study and it, it's, it's, it's confusing anyway. I really want Susan to take this and just digest it and give us the meat and potatoes version.
Yes.
Uh, of that, because this is her first day to begin with, and there are some things here that just make no sense to me. Uh, it says, uh, if nothing is built, okay, conclusion, if nothing is built, then the Welsh Road and Lane Road, uh, southbound lane turn, southbound left turn lane is warranted. Okay? But we get back two pages later where it says developer impacts, and it says Welsh Road and Lane Road, no improvements.
So if they don't build, we need a turn lane.
Makes sense.
Well, and and the other thing that's confusing about this is that it does, it it does not take into account anything that's already in the works, nothing. All it does is measure what's up there now, and and that to me is, is trash. And I need from Susan to tell us that this worthwhile or or trash it.
Yeah, I, I think that's, I admit, I don't understand traffic studies. That's, that, that was all Greek to me.
You know, I.
But Susan understands them and I'll, I'll tell her to be prepared to answer some questions.
Absolutely. I, I, I mean, I turned out the, the graph sheet where it shows left turns, right turns and all this kind of stuff. And and they, they don't really indicate what I'm looking for on that. It's just, uh, it's, it's kind of, it's kind of a mess. Uh, on this, uh, so I need for looking, and then have we considered sending any of this to Chris Mullins and have him go over?
They've already went through it.
They did?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that was something that we kind of already worked out with Chris Mullins, the traffic studies. When we get a traffic study now, it comes into us, we send it down to them and we make him aware. We're not footing the bill for this, but we want you to look at this too. We had a meeting with Chris and Anthony a month ago.
Oh, good.
So we've kind of worked out some differences and we've got everything put together, so we're showing each other everything and everyone's seeing everything.
Okay, and on this, it said, okay, the, the offsite on this thing, um Durant Road cannot handle a, any more impact without having huge improvements. That's a county road and, and county and village and township and more, we'll all have to get together and do something one time for this. We, we had years ago, uh, we had a thoroughfare plan and it actually showed that, that this could, would be a natural thoroughfare from one oh four over to Welsh Road. Uh, of course, it can't, really can't be now because of the, the housing and the thing that's on it, but but we need to have a measure, major way to get from one point to another without using these farm roads. And Durant Road will not handle this kind of uh, even the, even the construction traffic that's gonna have to happen in, in order to make this work. It's not gonna, and then McCord Road, you've got into Culvered. That, it, it's fifteen feet wide, that roadway. It, it's rough. It's fifteen feet.
We live in this house right here.
Foot wide. And it falls off on both sides.
Did you notice the, the turn of what was submitted during the pre-annexation agreement?
Yes, I saw that.
On McCord Road was eliminated.
Yes, I saw. There's a lot of things eliminated and changed, and I'm not happy with what I'm seeing.
Yeah.
Me either.
I, I'm just really. And then, you know, we're over here, we've got, oh, we got a water line that's twelve inches that we can hook to over here. Who said?
Well, and that was part of the discussion. John Groves had a meeting with them or talked to them and their engineer got back with John saying, well, the, the line won't hold what we planned to put into it, is what they came back and said. And I don't know where that went. That was what John told me was pretty much what the discussion went. And I said, so what's the other option? It's basically them running the line over on the other side of one oh four and dropping in.
Uh, and well, there's, there's, I mean, yeah, I mean, there are a lot of things that's gonna have to be worked. And, and we've always tried to work so that we could, we could have two points of access so that we wouldn't have a, a dead end uh, in our water, our water flow, water system. So two points of entry or exit to do that. Uh, sewer, are we deep enough? I mean, these are, I know, and, and according to you know, I, they're gonna say, oh, that's all engineering. Well, yeah, it's, of course it is engineering, but it's, it's a question I can solve. Are they gonna have to have a lift station for this?
And that was something else they was talking to John about, and now they're saying that they may have to.
I'm not buying.
Originally, they said absolutely not.
I'm not buying lift stations. Yeah, they're gonna need a lift station. There's no way they get that many houses near that one. They can, I'm, and, and you're right, especially, especially this, if, if they have basements, I think you'd buy with patio homes, I think you'd get by with slabs.
These aren't gonna have, the town owns a lot of basements because the garage is underneath them.
You can't have three-story building without a, without a, without a basement.
I would recommend that everyone read and digest Exhibit A and Exhibit B. Proposed ordinance before the next meeting, because you're gonna have more questions. And they're all in Exhibit A and Exhibit B.
Is, is this, I, I don't know, I'm just.
If you want further restrictions, you're gonna have to read A and B and, and walk your way through that, because you can change it now.
And if Belshad's are seven hundred thousand dollars, Durant Road's gonna be what, fourteen million?
I, I mean.
I figure you can get by less than seven.
Okay, then McCord's another seventy.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I mean, my only point is this thing, these are the unknowns and and if we're sitting here and saying, yeah, we're gonna approve this and this is okay, go for it. Where do you start? And what, and what do you have to do first? To me, roads, roads have to be improved first.
Yeah.
I mean, that, you can't just, you can't just.
And we've got, what, a township road, a county road, and then we're involved.
Yeah, and, well, there's a lot of other things there too, but uh
do you all understand the private road versus public road?
Yeah, I don't think I like it.
Kind of like Genoa is private.
Right.
Yeah.
But with this, it's going to cause such a headache inside there, not only with delivery.
On the HOA though.
But who are they gonna come to? It's, they're, they're gonna come here and then we're gonna have to tell them to go to the HOA, which is, which is a headache for the people in the office.
Yeah, and, and I agree, and you're right, you're right.
They don't have to bond it, they don't have to warranty it, they don't have a year after they're done. It's all them and they keep it up and they make it look nice.
But on the, on the original, well, on the original map, all right, this very reasonable spacing, very reasonable parking, this is absolutely in the, you can't get that many.
That's what they originally brought in.
Oh, I know.
That five and six lots, remember?
Yes.
They brought that in and council decided on the pre-annexation, we want three and four, we want five and six.
That's correct.
Somehow that.
That's good.
And where that, thank you.
Where that park did.
Yep, it's gone.
Yeah, the park that was.
A lot of changes.
The buffer trees are all gone.
Yeah.
Not that you're buying tonight.
And this, this lot here, it, I mean, it touches the lot in, so it would cross it. There is no buffer. I mean, this house corner is right on it.
Well, I say we go with what Mr. Bill said and look over.
Make sure you read it.
Yeah, a lot of reading.
That was in the detail.
And then when we come back next month, have your questions.
Get the Cliff Notes?
Okay, if there's not anything else on that, is there any additional business?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I think the um, I don't know where we are with this. I think some explanation needs to go around on a TIF that's out there. I know bits, pieces have probably been going different directions. So I'd like to kind of go through this very, as quick as possible. We have a, uh, we brought in Caleb Bell who started going through and are, looking at our uh analyzing our tip, doing an audit of our TIF and looking at the submissions from K Nova.
Well, K Nova.
So with everything that they had submitted, they went through and they've, they're doing a complete audit with everything, which has worked out really well. He's been a huge asset to the village, working with us, good to work with. We have right now, what we have discovered, when we worked, when we originally met with AWS on the property at Durant and one oh four, that two hundred acres, that K Nova owned that. When we met with AWS, we told them that there was no TIF on that property. And there really, there is not a TIF on the property. Because where the property is situated though, what happened is that was part of the original Lehman Farm. And when that was purchased by K Nova, then the village, K Nova requested the village set up a TIF district, and that was included in the original TIF district. Then the village put together a TIF agreement that was agreed to with K Nova, and we all are familiar with the TIF agreement. Then when Bill wound up selling that property to AWS, and Bill, for whatever reason, for the past four or five years that he's had that property, he never filed the DTE twenty-four form with the state of Ohio.
Which.
Which never activated the TIF.
Oh.
So there was no TIF ever activated on that property. So when we met with AWS, when we was going through all this and we met with them out here at the plant, we met with them up in Columbus at Jobs, Ohio and so on and so forth, they kept asking about the TIF, that the village would be willing to negotiate a TIF, a new TIF with them. And then we said, yeah, we said. And then we said, yeah, we said, just to let you know, and Wendy called the state and double-checked, there's never been anything filed with the state of Ohio, so there is no TIF on that property at this time, so it's not producing anything financially. Well, when Caleb came in and started doing our audit for us and looking at all the TIFs and everything else, he came back and sat in a meeting and told us, well, you're half right. There is no TIF on the property, but if there was, Billy owns the TIF rights to that property.
He still owns.
He still owns the TIF rights. So this is where we're sitting. You got a TIF sitting there on that piece of property. Bill owns the TIF rights, but he can't file the DTE twenty-four form because the only people that can do that is either the property owner, the village without property owner consent, or the village with property owner consent. So it's either us or AWS can file the DTE twenty-four form. Bill cannot file it. So Bill's sitting there with the TIF rights, which produce zero dollars. If AWS decides to file the form, Bill collects the money under the original agreement that we have with him.
But he has to spend the money.
He would apply the money he gets towards the payments on what he has spent on the other side of the road.
Who's footing the bill for the improvements on that property?
Well, those improvements benefit that property. That's, I think that's the kicker.
Well, what, what Bill had done on that piece of property over there is basically he's ran a sewage line underneath 104 and set a manhole at the very corner, well, or Durant and 104. But he had to run all the line on the other side of the road to get that one in there, as well as feeding everybody else.
Right.
So the TIF on that side of the road, Bill's, will collect all of his money back. He will collect all of that money, will come back and we pay him interest. It's not much, but we, there is interest, we pay until he has paid off with the TIF that's generated from that side of the road. This property's sitting there, like I said, it generates nothing because there's no TIF filed and Bill can't file the paperwork. And if AWS files it, money goes to Bill. We file it, money goes to Bill, so we have no need to file the paperwork. Why file if I'm not, you know?
Is AWS asking for?
AWS, in our meeting with them, and he was up there with me, they and a few others, they was requesting, wanting to know about the TIF. Wanting to know if the village would be willing to negotiate a TIF with them. I said yes, they said, and there's no TIF on it. And that's, at that time, we said, no, there is no TIF on this property. So they did ask us about if we would be willing to negotiate a TIF with them and if we'd be willing to negotiate a new CRA agreement with them, which is a tax abatement.
And it states that if you sell it, I thought that they could exercise that DTE at, at any time, is how it read. Did I read it wrong?
Who can, you have to be a property owner or the village to file the DTE twenty-four with the state of Ohio. And Billy sold the property before he filed, so he can no longer file with the state.
So why doesn't AWS, I mean.
Why don't they what?
Kind of pushing to.
Well.
I mean, if they want a new one and he won't file it, then that's between them, right?
He can't file it.
He can't file it.
Well, no, no, for him to sign away or whatever.
To sign up his TIF rights.
Yeah, I mean.
And I, and I asked, I asked Bill, or actually Caleb, asked Bill to give up his TIF rights on that piece of property because right now it's financially worth nothing to him. And Caleb went as far as he's put an agreement together and sent it over to him. Bill said no.
Okay.
So what's the village? Um, I don't know, probably, there would be probably a few million dollars on the table that would help us pay off our infrastructure and everything else that we've. Well, we, you know, if.
Or we can pay off a fifth of the new plan.
You know, it, it would generate some money.
Yeah.
It would, it would generate money.
Would that be because we would negotiate a different one that would be more beneficial to us or how?
We, we could, well.
Couldn't, we couldn't negotiate one worse.
And, and the thing, and the, and the thing is with AWS coming in here, and I'm sure they was asking about it because they would have to make some finance, or make some pretty heavy financial investments to be able to build their data center. And they're looking to get their money back. Well, if they, you know, as it stands now, we're locked in, Bill's holding the TIF rights.
So how, does that affect the new?
The new property that's up there, there is no TIF on it, there is no, uh, CRA. It's a clean slate, it's not a TIF district. So before a TIF could be put on the Jan property, you would have to, council would have to put it into the TIF district, put it into the CRA district and then negotiate a contract with the property owner.
So could they, this, I gotta ask, is, could they do everything on the new property? And the other property, if they own both, where they don't even need the other one? So everything would go on this new property?
You would, you would get, what would happen is the money would be generated, the money's generated by what's built on the property. So you're gonna lose whatever's built on that property.
You're not gonna lose it.
Well.
You're just going to have to use it for infrastructure payments and repayments.
So I mean, they could.
You lose it to a general fund.
They could circumvent Billy and we could do it on TIF.
No, no, because if, if there is a parcel, if that property up there is, if a DTE is filed, we are obligated under the current agreement we have with Billy.
That's what I mean, if we, just on the new property that they're asking to come in.
Okay, on the new property, Billy has nothing to do with that one.
Right.
It's the village and us.
If we gave them the agreement on that, if they own them both, can the improvements on this property benefit this property? So that would be on this TIF agreement, not where Billy's holding hostage?
A TIF agreement, you can only spend money in the TIF district. So if there's a TIF district here and one here, you can only use the TIF money on this district for this side of the road. That makes sense.
But their two properties are on the same side of the road, right?
Are you saying only put the buildings on the Jan?
Well, no, they could put them on both properties, but the TIF monies would come back to the new clean slate.
The TIF district.
So that each, each one's a different district?
Yes, yes.
Oh, oh, okay.
The Jan property would be a whole district, yes.
So they can always, you can always enlarge and, and shrink TIF districts through legislation.
But then that would put, give Billy something, if we made it larger to like half of that northern property, which is where their buildings are supposed to go, what does that do to us legally?
Can we ask for them to sign off the TIF? For Billy to sign off the TIF to give it to us, so that they can.
He said no.
So he can sell the Jan property?
Uh, that's.
Well, I think that's.
Say, this, right. Asking for a promo, I mean, we talked, we talked last cow about how things look. I mean, that, to me, that almost is borderline.
Well, you get to, you get to the point where you talk negotiation. I'm not saying quid pro quo or anything, but.
You're getting thrown those out there.
But you're looking, but you're, but you're looking at a negotiation, what was asked was, Billy, if you would, if you'd sign off on the TIF, you'd probably be more apt to, uh, approve your rezoning. If you're not willing to work with us, why would we wanna work with you? And that's, that was the bottom line. Now, having said that, these are two completely separate issues, and I don't want anyone in this room to hold the thought of that against how you vote on Billy's stuff coming up. And I wanna be perfectly clear about that.
Right.
One does not have anything to do with the other, so.
Yeah.
Vote what you think is right for the other one, but this is where we're at as of now. Billy's holding a TIF that's not worth a nickel to him. It would be worth, it could be worth millions to us and he's not willing to work with.
And he's gonna get that money.
He will get the money. It's gonna take longer for him to collect the money, but he will get paid back from.
Longer.
Over at the other side of the road.
If that counts as reimbursement, if we can, if we count that as a reimbursement, I don't care.
Count what is a reimbursement? If the amount that's collected off that goes back toward what is owed in reimbursement for the development, then I don't care whose name it's under.
Oh, so he's saying, let him exercise, let him exercise it in his name and it'll pay him off faster. But then AWS.
They will.
That's not our problem.
Well, that's kind of is our problem.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Let, let the lawyers take care of it.
You know, it's, it's.
For now, let, let Caleb.
Do they need to take care of it before we vote on April first?
No, 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 the, the TIF has nothing to do with the vote. It is wholly separate, there is no quid pro quo, there's no one for one, there's no nothing. The, the TIF agreement will be worked out, Caleb is a solid tax attorney, he'll take care of you, follow his advice.
And I got four calls from residents in MI, and they're all gonna come back and say that they're good with it because their screening has been met. If MI exercises on that property, then they're gonna work to make it, you know, once they see what's built. So if we don't have as much people against it, I mean, we definitely gotta make sure we don't put the TIF thing into our minds. You know, I mean.
I mean, I know Alan's looking out for us because they, they made forty-seven million dollars off of that piece of property.
And they'll make how much off the Jan property?
Probably at least that much, if not more.
I mean, they'll probably give a little discount because it's the same buyer, but still probably thirty to forty million.
Correct.
I mean.
I, I guess, here, here's the thing, and there's, profit's not a dirty word.
No, no.
But, you know, you've got someone, he comes down here, he bought up all the Lehman Farm for sixteen million. He, so he paid fourteen, thirteen, five, fourteen thousand an acre, fine. He's turned around, started selling it to, um, Van Trust, sixty-three thousand an acre.
Right.
And the price just went up with everybody else. He sold that over there for two hundred and ten thousand dollars an acre. He made over forty-two million dollars on that one parcel. So he is, came in, he spent sixteen million buying everything. He's made twenty, he's turned in twenty-four million dollars worth of improvements, that's forty million bucks. He made all of his money back on selling that one piece of land. Good businessman.
Absolutely.
Good businessman. Plus he's making whatever the hundred thousand, a hundred million he made over there selling all that land at a good price.
And he's getting two percent back on his money.
And he's getting TIF dollars from the village for everything that he invested for that twenty-four million dollars.
Yeah.
You know, you, so it's like, right now, I'm sitting here looking at the whole deal and it's like, okay, so you're gonna make a couple hundred million dollars in, off Commercial Point. And, and he stands possibility another thirty, forty million off Jan property. You made your two hundred million dollars off of us. Right now through the TIF, the school's still getting their hundred and sixty-five million bucks. The village so far has collected two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I'd have to look, but yeah.
Two hundred and fifty thousand, but we invested by the time the sewage plant's done, twenty-two million.
But we've gotten.
It's, it's just very frustrating to me that we've invested twenty-two million dollars and the school's making out fine, Billy's making out fine, and yet he's unwilling to work with us at this point in time. That, that TIF deal, and that TIF deal's worth zero to him if no one does the paperwork.
You're right.
So why are you holding it? So anyway, that's, that's where I'm at with it. I just think there's been a lot of things that, the only other thing, one other thing, um, developers, and you'd mentioned it to me also.
I got, yeah, I mean, I got Bruce calling and emailing and everything like that. And I just, I got done talking to him out there and he said, well, I'm a constituent. Did you vote for me? No. Could you vote for me? No. Then you're not a constituent. Well, Billy is. Could he vote for me? Uh, no. Does he live here? No. So he's not a constituent. Your contractors, okay, your developers, you shouldn't be contacting the council individually. If you wanna talk to council, talk to council as a council. But I said, this is nonsense, that I mean.
And we had this happen a few years ago and it caused a big rift in council.
And the other, the other people that called that live in Foxfire, I had no problem discussing anything with them. You know, they, they live here, they, they invested here, they have. And I mean, it's, once again, this is another one of those things, is it legal, illegal? No, it just looks bad. It's just, you know, when they call.
We really can't stop it though, correct? I mean, I'm sure they're not taking the call.
That, and, and that, and I will ask, how many people got a text, email or a phone call?
I mean, I saw them in a riding competition.
How many of you returned the phone call?
Well, he has to be on the Cal agenda, so I did.
You know, it's, it's just, like I said, it's, you guys, you, you, you're adults, do what you want, but you wanna talk about. They come and meet with the administration all the time, the administration has no vote. We give him information and talk to him. The only reason that the developers, and not just K Nova, but. The only reason a developer is gonna talk to you, what do you have to give them that?
Vote.
There you are. And when you start doing that, that's, not saying it's wrong, but that's where things start looking bad. And in the past, like Nancy said, when it happened before, it caused a lot of hate and dissension amongst you guys.
Yeah, we just asked that it not happen, if he needed to be at a Cal agenda or whatever, you know, he would contact me. But, um, he, he did not, he quit contacting council members, but I knew he was gonna call the other.
Well, right now, they're about done, I mean.
Well, it's not just them.
Well, no, I mean, I get it.
Not at all.
I mean, when you start taking calls from developers and the only thing you have to offer is your vote, it just, what, if something needs said, they need to say it in a public meeting in front of everybody. Lay the cards on the table, let the chips fall where they may.
Well, the, the, then the reason that I sent you that was when I get all these calls from people that were against it, not for it, I'm like, well, hell, let's just, if they're not, if we don't have people against it anymore, why not just go ahead and do it?
Well, I don't know, I, I said, I haven't gotten any calls.
No, I mean, that's why, that's why I emailed you.
Well, the last couple emails I got didn't, I haven't heard anybody telling me they're for it yet.
Yeah, they, I mean.
I haven't gotten any.
I've got some that says they're still against it.
I, I would caution all of council, be careful with your emails, they're all public records.
I make them call.
Someone is, someone is sending you something via email. Obviously, that's a public record.
Right.
Yep.
And you're not to vote, you're not to say how you're gonna vote, you're not to intimate how you're gonna vote, you're not to say anything about a vote in an email or a conversation with someone who contacts you, whether as a constituent.
Right.
Or as someone who has business before council. But if they do have business before council, your best bet is to say, I'm a village council person, and if you have something to say to me at the end of the day, you say it in an open public meeting.
And you would say that's a constituent as well.
Constituents, you're free to talk to, you have to talk to them. It'd be, it'd be.
Right.
Almost unforgivable not to talk to your constituents. Once again, you can't tell your constituents how you're gonna vote outside of village council. You can't have three of you on the phone at the same time or four of you in form of quorum.
That is recordable.
Well, and that's what looks kinda bad too, if a developer starts calling everyone individually, okay, what are we doing? Are we skirting the Sunshine Law?
Right. But.
You know, and it just, you're throwing, it's being thrown out there, not saying it's right or wrong, but, well, it is wrong, so.
Speaking of emails, can we do the emails for the, the food truck and stuff? Can that come to a dot gov instead of a Yahoo? Cause I mean.
I don't wanna change it at this point.
Well, if something happened to you, then we don't have any access to what's going back and forth.
I can't give anybody the passwords, I just did it so it wouldn't. Co, wouldn't go in, and all they are, the applications, that's all they are, so it wouldn't get mixed up in my emails. I want, I have one email, you guys are really picking on me with this stuff and I'm kinda getting tired of it. If it's not broke, why fix it?
If, if you, if you want a new email address, we can get you one. If we want a parksandrec@commercialpointohio.gov.
Yeah, maybe for next, I don't wanna really mess with it now because.
But for future or whatever, if that's, if that works or whatever, and then.
Yeah, I didn't mean right now, I mean, but we need to have something for the future, I mean, cause if, if you're not voted back.
Y'all should have a dot gov email address.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
A separate one I would need, cause it just, things get mixed up.
With their.
And I just don't, that just made it cleaner for me.
And public records training, have you both done the course? And it's not available yet, I don't know.
Yeah, it is, you can go on, um, live.
Go online.
You can go online to, um, Ohio Auditor's Office or, oh, webpage. And then you can click, and there's several days that you can do the virtual one, it's a free hour.
Okay.
Oh, did they?
No, you can watch individual videos, remember I showed you the other day? You could do that too, but that three-hour course.
The three-hour course qualifies.
When did that become available?
They just did it.
They just updated the Sunshine Law manual.
I was gonna say, I just asked you.
Well, I, I got a copy of the new Sunshine Law and I sent it to all the council members, the new manual.
So the dates are on the website?
Okay.
So the date's on the website?
So, yes, if you go to what I sent you.
Yeah.
Click it, then it will send you to where you need to.
And this is the one that we have to do.
You have to do it one night during your term.
Okay.
Did you send that to me?
I thought I did, but I'll double-check.
If you would, yeah, I don't remember seeing it.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't know it was out yet.
Yeah.
It's recent. Well, then, the last thing, I sent Alan a text over the weekend. United States Supreme Court recently came out with a ruling, um, that public officials cannot block anyone from sending them emails and text messages.
I saw.
Um, one of my, one of my associates, um, slash partners is going to do a small write-up on it. But for now, just know that when you have that fly in the ointment that keeps sending you something, you can't block them, you can't, you just have to accept it.
That was, you said email or text message?
Email, text message, Facebook.
We can block them from our personal phones.
From personal, from personal, yes, but not from your dot gov.
So, since we don't have a village phone, we don't have to accept text messages from anybody. You don't have to open up anything.
I was gonna say, aren't there personal phones though? Can those not be used for public records?
Personal phones can be used for public records if you're regularly receiving a text message from Alan, Nancy, myself. But, just know that you can't block anyone until I get further clarification on what this forty-six page opinion says.
Yeah.
Just don't block anyone.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Motion adjourned.
Motion by Ross, second by Eric, all in favor?
Uh, yeah, bye.
All right, have a good night.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I clean the water, it's wonderful.